Good evening, everyone. 6:00 PM on the December 5th. Regular council meeting will now come to order. Please rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
I am the president of the United States of America. This is the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
What is your duty? Ladies and gentlemen?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Stabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Peggy. Before we get started, if anyone's microphone is not on, please turn it on. Assist there, Mr. Roberts. There we go. All right. All right, we're on to item one. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Motion approved. Second, motion made by Frank Banker and second by Mike Stabel. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Right now, we move on to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand and wait for your call on. The ask that you limit your comment to no more than three minutes. I saw this hand go up right here. Yes, sir, please come up, state your name and address, and please give us your comments.
Good evening. My name is Keith Roderro. I'm 12th Street. And I wanted to address something in regards to the entrance to the 12th Street parking space. And I've noticed that sand buildup, what you might say is the walkway going up by the pillars, and on the area where the papers are, it's built up quite a bit. And I wanted to have some input from you guys, if you mind, if I were cleaning the area up and maybe get some of that sand off of our concrete, especially on the area where the steps are. It's encroaching into the four-foot area where if you go down with a car, especially the young ones or elderly folks, having a hard time getting in and out of there. And mainly that, how do you feel about me doing the work myself around the shower? The grass is encroaching on the area. It's very limited from what it used to be. And I would like your input on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roderro. Normally, we do not respond to your citizen comments. However, at the end of a meeting, we will be able to happily respond to your city manager comments. He may decide to comment on this topic also.
Is this something he would handle, he would take care of? Is this something he would handle?
Yes, sir.
Should I go to him specifically to take care of something like that?
Yes, sir, because, I'm sorry, we're having a back and forth, but the city manager would be the first place to go to, to get approval or to find out maybe someone within the city would take care of it.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Please stand up to the podium and give your name and address and your comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irene Sergiara. I'd just like to introduce myself. I live on 15th Street. On September, I was selected to represent Bella Beach for the Miss Florida USA Pageant. I'm very happy and excited to be the first to ever represent you all. And I will work hard to serve my community and inspire others to do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
How y'all doing this evening? My name is Kathy T. Luger, 114 Bella Beach, 9th Street. My comments are about the 7th Street boat ramp. I just was over there the other afternoon dumping some fish carcasses, and I realized it was an average tide. I looked at the ramp, I walk out, it's one-fist deep at that water level at that time. Today, I took photographs at average high tide for the day. It was less than my knee-deep. It only extends nine feet out from the seawall. That's not enough to float a jet ski. That's not definitely enough for an 18-foot skiff. The old boat ramp always sucked at low water, but for the manager informing me, we've spent, as a city, $80,000 to cap over the seawall and do some kind of ramp improvement there. Still no dock. It's not functional. Whatever that is, is not a functional boat ramp. The ones over here go out 26 feet. To any rocks, at least 22 and a half feet. An 18-foot boat trailer, okay, is 18 feet long. That's about 20-foot trailer. The rule of thumb is your back tires, your truck hit the water edge, boat shed out enough water to float. This would not happen even on a high tide here. I'm making myself known to the city. I have photos, if you'd like to see them. I'm kind of pissed off because that seems like a waste of money. You don't build something wrong, you build it right. Now someone's got to go back there and fix this problem. And where the ramp stops, it drops straight into the mud. Tonight, at 4:30 in the morning, overnight, will be the dead low, a serious low. I bet you the whole thing will be out of the water. I would like to know and let someone get back to me, what's going to be done about this? Because a boat ramp needs to function like a boat ramp. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Yes, ma'am, please come right up with your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nicole Sussman. I live at 98 Harbor Drive. And I just wanted to talk tonight about the Bella Beach Community Foundation and just make everyone aware of our brick program that we're starting. The flyers are on the table out in the hallway, and anyone that purchases a brick will be located outside of City Hall, and we'll make sure to like put all the bricks that people donate out there. And this is just the order form, so if you'd like to purchase one, all the information is on the sheet. And then also, I did want to talk about this new program that we're starting. It's a adopt-a-mall program. It's through Key Palace Beautiful, and we're going to do a beach clean, not beach clean, I'm sorry, bridge cleanup, which the first one will be on the, it's going to be the third Saturday of every month, and it'll be January 21st is the first one at 9:00 AM, and we'll meet here at City Hall to get started. And after our first bridge cleanup, then we'll be able to get one of the signs on the bridge that we're part of. So if you have any questions about that, please ask on the foundation board, and we'll be happy to answer all of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the citizens? Yes, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address.
I'm Keith on 9th and Drive. I'm also on the question record. I just wanted to let everyone know about a couple events that are going to be happening. We're going to have the second annual health wellness fair on Saturday, 14th, and it's going to be 10 to 2. And we're going to have premier healthcare providers providing screenings, information, and giveaways to help move healthy ones in our community. And also, on January 19th, we're going to have a CPR class here at City Hall, and you can call City Hall for more information.
Thank you very much. Any other? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tammy Lavenda, 97, Harbor Drive. I'm just here also to speak a little bit about the community foundation. As it was brought up last Monday when we were selecting a new council member, just kind of wanted to give a State of the Union, and I don't really have anything to read, but we started working on the foundation in March of this year, so it took us like five months, and there's four people right now on our board. We are looking for a fifth person, would be a vice chair. But up until this date, our board has been financing all of the foundation. So it's about $2,000 to get all of the paperwork through the IRS, the state of Florida, all of that. So we do have lots of opportunities for donations or support on our website, so if anybody is looking for like a last-minute 2022 tax donation, we would greatly appreciate it. We are reaching out. I have meetings set up with Duke Energy and Waste Management, so we are seeking support through other areas, but I'm more than positive that we are going to be successful. We just need to get the word out, and we're more than happy to get it started. We kind of knew that's what it would be. But I just, as last Monday, when he got up here and was like, oh, the foundation can do this and can do that, like, we're so in the beginning of what we're going to do, like, we're more than happy to take over whatever projects the city wants us to take over, from the merchandise to, you know, the social events, so those will be moved from the Park and Record, just because it's easier to do some of the things through the foundation, but until we get some capital built up in our account, we really can't do many of that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, since March, pretty much the board has been paying for everything, so we would love your support if at all possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the citizens? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number three. We have a long enforcement report. Please come up, sir. Sergeant McKnight.
Thank you, sir. I have the October report for Bella Beach to give you tonight. The first page of the report, there is only two assaults reported during the month of The second page of the report, there's a total of four people arrested for offenses for the month of October. The third page, the deputy activity report, there were 791 events in the scale Bella Beach during the month of October with 896 units responding to those events. And for the final page, the crashing citations, there's no crashes during the month of October, and there's a total of 209 donations citations and warnings issued to the city of October.
Thank you. Question from the council. Yes, sir. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what is the definition of a felony habitual traffic offender?
So that would be something along the lines of driving on a suspended license. There's a couple different ways that you can reach that status, but typically, it's if you have a suspended license, once you get to four or five suspensions that you can get the citations on or charge with, then the judge will go ahead and classify you as a habitual traffic offender.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I was crossing the bridge this morning and saw that there was a sheriff's patrol car sitting in the median, and apparently someone was coming down and they were riding the boat ramp too fast, and I was amazed how fast he was. They will turn that car around and stop the speeder, so nice job on that. I do have one question about the concealed carry firearm. Would that be, maybe they pulled the car over and there was a gun in the car?
Yes, sir. That was actually Deputy Perez's case, I believe, in the beginning of the month of October. He stopped the person, made an arrest on a traffic offense, and inside the car, between the driver's seat and the center console of the car, was a handgun that was not properly stored in some vehicle. So it meant that that was in charge.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, Sergeant, I appreciate it. Hey, Scott, Deputy Clacko with code enforcement report.
Good evening, district mayor, council officials, staff, and citizens. Deputy Clacko for the record. As you saw in the log that I submitted for the month of November, still busy. We're really going after a lot of these ordinance violations with the brush and the bushes. I'm getting a lot of compliance. One of the things that you'll probably notice in there is usually we give a five-day notice, but I've been giving everybody 15 or better because of the holidays and trying to get somebody out to take care of the issues out of these homes. It's been working out real well. I'm complying or compiling a list for the city manager and letting him see where actually where we've stopped, actually given the notices, and when the jobs are done. So we're, hopefully, we're in the right direction to start in January again. It's kind of, I'm going to try to drop it back down to the five or 10-day notices to kind of push the citizens to get this done, but one of the complaints I get is trying to hire somebody, maybe two or three days before they get a return phone call. So I usually give my business card, saying if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or my email address, and that's been working out well. I've been getting some emails saying that people are getting the work done, or they've got somebody coming up to give the estimates and get the work done. So other than that, that's about it. I'll stand for any questions.
Counselor. Ms. Mary Shirley, go ahead.
Sure. There was a boat that fell off a lift.
Yes.
I see on your list here. Are we doing anything about the dangling lift that's?
That's one of the things I've discussed with the city manager, that we are going to get with him and tell him to get, he needs to get that repaired because of the issue with that boat, because it went during the tropical storm Nicole, kind of went out into the intercoastal, rested up in San Key, and then drifted down, and we finally got it down off of Belle Isle. And talking with the marine officer, it's been a little bit of an issue trying to get that boat out of the water. I've been off for the last few days. I don't know if it's still there or not, but the marine unit was taking care of it, but yes, we will address that.
Yeah, it's kind of happened.
Yes.
And then, could you make this handy?
Yes, ma'am. And I will tell you, I have another house on Alita that we've been working on this for six months to get her lift repaired, and it's an issue with supplies, permits, and everything else, but we will take care of it.
I was happy to see the boat was still floating and count sunk in the middle of the intercoastal, you know, even though it's?
Yeah, it was partially submerged the last time I saw it, and I haven't heard from the marine deputy yet, but whether it's been pulled out of the water.
Thank you.
I have a question. Whenever someone does receive a quote and they're given a time delay, if they show you that quote the next time you come around, is that sort of way second clock was it?
Yes, sir. What I'll do is if somebody says, hey, they can't come out for another three weeks, I understand, you know, and if we get a complaint on it, then I'll address it with whoever is the complaint, and you just let them know that, yeah, we were going to stay, because one of the issues we had was down on 1037, and it took a while, but we finally got that house cleaned up.
And I have one more question. What is silt fence repair?
The silt fences are the black fabric fences that go around lots.
Okay.
And technically, if they're doing work there, those fences have to be up to eliminate debris going out. If the house or the lot is vacant and they're not doing any construction, we can have them remove those until construction starts.
All right, and do you pay attention to the, I'm just asking questions, the drain guards, the bed guards?
Yes.
What is their purpose? Does it prevent anything from doing that, or?
It's supposed to eliminate, and the city manager backed me up on this, it's supposed to eliminate certain things going down into the sewer system, such as rocks and those types of things, so it's just supposed to milk the water through it.
Okay. All right. That's it. Counselor, anything else? I don't know if this would be for you or for the city manager, but since we're talking about silt fencing and silt, I was down 12th and 13th Street the other couple residents were complaining about the new construction, and there's no silt socks on any of those new drains that are going in there, and you can actually see some of the debris already in it. Would that be in you, since this is new construction? I don't know if that would be your jurisdiction or the city manager's?
I could, I'll take care of that. I believe they thought that whole system plugged.
Okay.
But I'll check on that thing.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a very, very Christmas.
Same to you, Mrs. C. All right, we're up to item four, which is the city attorney's report. Mr. Moore, you head up the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First and foremost, congratulations, Miss Livingstone, we're in the first meeting. It was an exciting moment. I don't have anything major to report except to say that it has been a pleasure joining this body in the middle of the year and working through our first year together. I commend the efforts we've taken to meaningfully advance policy in this body and these chambers, and if there's anything, as we go into the next year, expect to see some of the issues we've discussed, the administrative elements of the vessel exclusion ordinance, which every jurisdiction will handle, the sign code ordinance and other similar, and also legislative session that I'm sure will have plenty of fun surprises for us to adapt. And so with that, thank you for the opportunity to work for you, to work with you, and I look forward to the next year. I have to answer your questions, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Moore and Council. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And now we are on to item number five, city manager's report. We have a city manager, everyone, Mr. Riefler.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's start off the 12th and 13th Street project. That still has a January completion date, but we'll most likely see more than 90% of completion in the next couple of weeks. They have all the pipe installed, including the additional pipe that we approved in the November meeting. They have some sod driveway restoration to do after completing the valley curve, but we're getting very close. They're going to mill the road and then lay the asphalt within a couple of weeks, so we're getting very close on that project. The Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, some good news there, is the Duke agreement invoices $5,000 for phase one, but in the process, we received additional credits in a total for both phase one and phase two, over about $440,000, how many credits? So phase one was credited an additional $162,000. That is good because the original cost was about $1.1 million, now we're under a million. If you remember, when we did the presentation on Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, and we were talking about the deficit, the project was in, these credits, in a sense, the ARPA money, the $802,000, is covering that additional that we needed to complete the undergrounding project. So it kind of brought us in to working at the P. They are still working on easements where they can get them. If they cannot attain an easement, then it's going, the equipment's going to be moved to the actual of the right-of-way per the agreement. The 7th Street boat ramp, 7th Street seawall, 16th Street seawall, the seawalls are complete, the boat ramp is complete. I was being aware this week of an issue with the boat ramp. The engineer designed it with a wheel stop at the end of the ramp that has been proven to be, it's going to be an horrible problem for that ramp and the use of it based on the way the tide is in the previous ramps. So we, I already spoke to the engineer, we're going to eliminate that wheel stop, and I will look into that drop-off that was mentioned earlier in citizen's comments. We still have to get the fishing dock installed, that may be something that can be taken care of while we're getting the dock installed. The same thing with 16th Street seawall, that is complete, all we need some backfill, and the city staff will be doing the sod restoration for those projects. The 17th and 18th Street, the DMP Stormwater Improvement Project, we have a meeting with this DAC. We refer to this discussion, we have one concern involving both the Stormwater Fund and the Capital Projects Fund as it relates to the loan. Chair of the DAC, once again, and I plan to meet with the bank tomorrow and to discuss what the qualifications would be relating to those funds. Code enforcement analysis, we're moving forward with our quadrant plan that we presented. Like Steve mentioned earlier, we are focusing in on some of the most important and most frequently seen items that were on that quadrant report, and we're also tackling some of the frequently seen items that maybe weren't ranked as high, but they are still aesthetic codes that the city needs to go through, which we want to make sure people are within those codes. So that's what we're at right now. I've been logging the daily directives that we give to Steve, and we are forming reports to be able to report back to you. The City Hall generator, last time, I think it was a meeting ago, I told you that the source voltage has gone up. Councilmember Banker recommended them look into the used generator option. I did speak to the main company, Generac, that I was dealing with. They said that they do have used options, but warranties, they do have warranties for those. I did reach out to CAT, and I'm trying to get more information on their used options, so I'll follow up with that. City Hall seawall, based on the current price per foot, we're well under budget, so I think we need to hold on that project. We've been experiencing some erosion out there, but I think that it's not a thing that needs to be taken care of tomorrow, if we have some time, but it's something in the future that the platform will update. The Gulf of Excalibur boot replacement, we passed the ordinance. I got with the FWC, working through the all permit process, they've been extremely helpful. I pretty much compiled their whole application, I'm waiting for the necessary approval from the FDPC and the US Army Corps of Engineers before I can submit the application to make sure that I have everything the way they want it, and I will order the booties and plan on installing them. The Morgan Parkamot restoration, I brought this up because it's in our budget. We had to mill it and resurface the Parkamot. It's getting in rough shape over the years. My plan is to have some estimates present to you in the January agenda. Lock and easement survey, that came back, and we did very well. Big thing, keep the parks recreation board, they put a lot of effort in just distributing those surveys to all the residents. They went door-to-door, got a lot more results than we would have by any other means, and I forwarded those results out to you, and I've also put them on the city website.
For the, just for the citizens there to hear, would you give us a brief summary of that survey, as they may not know what the outcome was?
If you haven't seen the results of the survey, it was heavily weighted to not move forward with the project of paving the lock and easement throughout the city. It was about 80% to 20%, thought that they were, for the most part, better products to be spending that kind of money for. But if you can see the exact results, if you go to the city website, on the very front page, it'll say lock and easement survey, and it lays out all the statistics for the three questions, and then all the comments that were made, taking advantage of each comment. And then Child's Playground, it's still, we're still waiting for it to come in. I did get in touch with a used playground company in the area called Used Child's Playsets, and they might just, you know, allow us, like, they could remove the playset for us, take it off our staff's hands, and, you know, they'd provide work for us, $5,000 at this point in the city complete staff, but they'll take care of that demolition. And you asked me to reach out to the property owner with the tree at Harbor Drive and East Street. I did get in touch with that property owner, it took us a little bit to find his telephone number, but I do have a number for him. He is agreeable, not that he's going to pay to remove the tree, but he'd be agreeable to have the tree removed. So that's kind of our way at this point. Oh, in citizen comments, we had the dimension of the sand on the 12th Street beach access, that's something I could look into as far as where the CCC line is, and we can move that sand back to kind of recover where the paved areas, so that definitely can be done. And... And as far as the holidays coming up, we have, the Dolly will be closed for Christmas Eve, Christmas holiday, New Year's and New Year's holiday, so another one will be closed on 12/23, it's a Friday, 12/26 is a Monday, 12:30 is a Friday, and the second of the new year is a Monday. Normally our city council meeting would be on that Monday, so we need to come up with a new day for the January council meeting.
Council, Frank Banker.
Couple of things, the 12th Street beach access, you said you're going to look into that, there's three benches there, I believe you went with the work session, probably going to be getting another bench there, two of the benches, or one bench is completely loose, it's off its foundation, there's no, nothing to lay it down, the other one is three quarters of the way gone. And I was out there, a couple of citizens said they would participate, volunteer, clean up area up, but if you remember Kyle, previous city manager, had problems with sea oats and everything like that, I said, don't anybody touch anything until, you know what I'm saying, he gets a CBA, God, it must have been really bad on that, so.
And since that occurrence, or when that happened, we've kind of backed off on the name somewhat, I have been in touch with FDPC since we moved some of the sand back at the 19th Street access because it was encroaching heavily, and I've been working with them on what we cannot do, to make sure they're completely in the loop.
So the, well, I guess the question is, citizens shouldn't be out there doing anything till?
I recommend that we have the city staff do it, so that can be approved.
And the bow ramp at 7th Street is going forward, right?
The bow ramp at 7th Street is complete, we have to take care of that wheel stop issue because it presents more of a, with such a low tide and a little water there, you really need to, during like medium to low tide, you know, get a trailer well off of that ramp. The old ramp allowed for that because what happens is slab going into the sill, and you could continue to back. The engineer, they designed it, put on that wheel stop, it was an oversight that Mr. Luke Rell made clear that it would present a problem, I talked to the engineer, and we discussed how I moved that.
And the dock will be put back shortly, right?
The dock, if approved tonight, I will get that going as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Council.
Mr. Roberts? Still on the 7th Street bow ramp, so just make sure I understand, so the old bow ramp extended out to distance X, so the new bow ramp, does it extend X minus some footage, or did it go to exactly the same point, or further based on the comment of a citizen?
From what I could tell, because when we were measuring the old bow ramp, I walked out there, like I said, the silt and sand had washed out probably about six feet off the edge of the sea wall, so you could trace concrete to about six feet, and then you'd start going down a couple of inches into the sand and kind of feel more concrete, we estimated that 10 feet would give us well out, where eventually that sediment would come back in, so it would be enough ramp to get out to where you would be, I guess, the mud, sand. So when they, when they did the slab, they had to dredge the sediment back, so there is, it does drop off, but that is something that may be able to be adjusted once we take that wheel stop off, so that at least that ramp will get you down to where the sediment is, and then from there, you're going to take it as far as you can, depending on the boat, the trailer.
Okay, so that is something to take a look at with the engineering firm, that perhaps it may be beneficial to go ahead and extend that thing further, so that even when we have a low tide, we're going to be able to have a boat launch and not have an issue?
I'll check with the engineers, my, it's my understanding that if we extend that slab, it's going to be buried, so.
It's going to be buried by silt, then it's naturally able to.
Yeah, by natural form, break back in with the tides.
Okay.
So, can we, can we, we're putting it off and have them, you know, because there's something worse than having it drawn.
Right, I think we can adjust.
Maybe we can try to trailer below the edge of that concrete, and it could cause that to turn and bug out, bug out, and so, you're suggesting you'll try to fill that void in?
Yes, so that you don't have a lot of lip, you don't have to catch your wheels.
Is the age higher than what it was before?
The engineer and the contractor told me that they had removed the slab and then put it back, poured it back in, it wasn't inspected by the engineer, so I trust that that's what happened, that's what was supposed to happen, and the slab was removed and reformed.
All right. Council.
I have to do this one.
Go ahead, you finish.
Exactly. I'd like to hear everyone else here on the city stage.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
You're fine, okay, all right, go ahead.
On the generator, so from everybody's history here, I'm just curious, over time in the past, how often has this particular building lost power?
Intermittently, a couple of hours since I've been here, during Irma, they never lost power, maybe, might have been down a couple of hours, but it could, depending on the storm.
Sure. And I understand, like, with a generator, with the Swiftman, many years, and all of our buildings had backup generator support, but at the same time, I think with our budget, we need to think through, you know, what do we really need here? And as long as you're, as you're buying a used generator, based on Mr. Banker's recommendation, as long as we're exercising those generators, you know, on a consistent method, like, once a week, once a month, we used to do those all the time, and Swiftman, to make sure that it's operating correctly, and so that when you need it, that's when you need it. We all understand it, so I guess from the infrequency that we've had any issues here, it's hard to really justify the dollars for a brand new generator, although somebody who supplies those would want to convince us otherwise. So there's, there's multiple opportunities out there, I believe, to get a used generator that we can bring onboard, and as long as we're exercising it, and we're supposed to, and basically running it once a week to make sure that what we need is ready to roll, I think that would be fine, whether or not we have warrants in mind, you know, and you can get it for such a low price, I believe, there's a lot of organizations that sometimes would just donate those, like, state would just say, hey, we're done with this one, you guys want it? You can have it. So those are things to possibly pursue, to see what we can come across, which is something to take a look at on that.
Right, and they'd still have to build it up to the 12-foot, so eliminate it.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's out of the water.
You can ask Mr. Roberts, or send some other people.
Next up, a question, yeah, the Morgan Park parking lot, who was that last, wasn't that recently made?
I'd say at least 10 years, I'll get the exact date.
He did a lot of work on it, I thought that was quite good.
I took a lot of pictures of it, that I was going to present to you, just the condition of it, when we discussed it.
Yeah, if you can share with us that, when you, me bringing the work session or whatever, I'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, hold on a second, I've got a couple of questions also, the bow ramp, thanks to that again, I hate to keep bringing it up, but it's not open right now, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're going to make sure that, once it is open, that it's hardened round, it's not something that's going to sink, because if the boat goes in there and they have to drag it out, it's not coming out, so I just want to make sure, I know it's kind of a hassle to delay reopening the ramp, and we want to make sure that it's right and safe. As far as the generator's concerned, I had a comment on that also, right kind of maintenance program, if you have a good, reputable company who's taking care of it, and it's an older generator, it'll work fine, we use one in our company, we've had to rely on it maybe twice in four years, but it cycles, it emails, and everyone knows when they're changing the oil, changing batteries, things like that. It's not cheap, don't let a larger generator like that, but it's certainly cheaper than buying a brand new, so I'm on board with that. I'd like to comment about the tree, that will be a nice conversation to have with the surrounding neighbors, see if they're interested in maybe doing something with that. And last thing, I was at the Florida Leave the Cities Conference this weekend, or actually last week, and I found out that they have a grant assistance program, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, and are we a member of it, have we signed up and even considered looking into what they have available to us?
I believe we are, but I will go check, because I believe we've signed us.
Okay, it's my understanding that over half the municipalities in Florida are members of that grant program, and they're supposed to be very well versed at directing you towards grants that you may not be aware of.
Okay.
And they did, they claim that even for municipalities like ours, where business is, we're pretty much a private community, there are some grants available, just, we've gotten some occasionally, so that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I forgot to thank you, I was probably your biggest pain in the butt, I'll say butt because of the holidays, seeing what the tree issue, I really appreciate you getting that and taking care of it, thank you. Any other comments from the council? One more, Mr. Roberts.
First, I wanted to thank you for the long list of projects, because that helps us to understand everything that's going on, so that's great. There is one thing that wasn't on the list, and I don't know, Kyle, if it would be something for you to address, or something for Randy to address, I know I received an email, I did read it, I didn't probably spend a lot of time delving into it, but I know there was a religious group that was within our city, and the end result was some type of a legal response from that organization, but either of the two, I think it was just a quick recap, to going, what happened?
Sure, um, quick recap, problem solved. Something more detailed recap, there was a religious organization canvassing in your community door to door, there is plenty of case law, providing that for religious organizations, local organizations, and the like, sort of those bastions of free speech we often think of, that canvassing door to door is permitted without the need for a permit, your code is in line with that constitutional case law, and as, while it may require permits for certain forms of solicitation, that kind of canvassing is specifically carved out from a permit requirement, they, somebody had approached some of the canvassers suggesting they may need a permit, or they should check with City Hall to inquire about getting a permit, that they, in response to that, that was what that organization's legal department sent a, hey, we're sure this was an oversight, but please be advised, there is legal authority on that, we had already conferred before that correspondence came through, we did not know that that correspondence was coming, but it was, by the time we received it, it was functionally mooted, because the city never once took any action on that issue, or specifically discouraged or compelled them to get a permit, so it's, it was sort of, it was, it ended up being a non-issue ultimately, but it was, it was resolved, and just as a general matter, whether it's members of the public, the commission or otherwise, if you're, if there's ever a question or a concern on what our codes allow or provide for, I'm the person tasked with giving you folks that legal advice, and what, and what we'll do about what our codes say is Kyle's role, so please bring those concerns to Kyle, if there's a, you know, any concern about approaching someone, saying, hey, Bella Beach, we don't do that sort of thing, whatever that sort of thing might be, that's for Kyle, Deputy Clapp, and their team to resolve, but that was kind of what I, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, on that issue, I think I responded to you, Mr. Moore, and Kyle, on the Watchtower case, because my previous work background, nonprofit organizations have a lot of leadway, especially religious groups, when it comes to religious labor or whatever, not saying that this organization was trying to set you, set us up, but there's a lot of organizations that are out there.
There are some that will, this, theirs was in response to a specific interaction they had, by the time we received your correspondence, the manager and I had already conferred on the issue and agreed, no action would be taken.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment on that, or a question actually, I thought that they sent us a creative letter, they were warning us in advance before they ever arrived, is that not the case?
That's not my understanding of the facts, I mean, my understanding of the facts was the letter was sent in response to an interaction they had.
They sent the sheriff, that was Kyle's sheriff, a sheriff, the sheriff lord had gone to all the US powers, I understand that, and I appreciate everyone not responding to my accidental fat finger reply, oh, great job everyone.
But we did give you 10 minutes.
Yes.
That it? Council?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reifler, great job.
Thank you.
All right, now we are on to the city clerk's report, Ms. Chanter, you have the
I don't have a report, but I did want to publicly thank Kyle, while I was on vacation for two weeks, he took care of two meetings that unexpectedly came up, completely took care of everything, I want to say thank you. That's all.
All right, thank you very much, Council, any questions?
Do you have any pictures from your vacation?
Any public records? All right, thank you. All right, now we are on to the consent agenda, items number seven and number eight, this is for approval of November 7th, 2022, City Council meeting minutes, and of the November 28th, 2022, special City Council meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Who was that, who was first?
Mike Sabal.
Second, who was the second? Banker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving right along, we are up to the regular agenda, item nine, Resolution 2022-10, Mr. Moore, would you please read this one?
Happily, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2022-10, a resolution to City Council, the City of Bella Beach, Florida, authorizing signatures which are to appear for all city check and draft writing, and instructing any financial institution to accept any certified copy of this resolution as evidence of the legality over City Council, and establishing an effective date, this has been reading Resolution 2022-10 by Ted Alon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, I'm going to do things a little different than I normally have in the past, the reason why is because I realized that if we didn't have a motion for any agenda item, then the citizens never had the opportunity to speak on it, and we clearly state, if it's not an agenda item, you're not allowed to speak, and I looked at it as we were keeping the citizen from speaking, so before I ask for a motion, I would like to go to the citizen for comments on this item, and we will be doing this going forward.
Comments from the citizens, all right, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 22, 2022-10?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, that's in the terror. All right, Frank, you have the floor.
This is typical, I believe, the last council session, when we moved to have all council members, the authorized checks, it was more than me for the city manager, it worked out, seemed to work out pretty fine, I think we should have been 40 minutes.
Council? I agree, and since there are no other comments, let's go ahead and take a vote, this is to approve Resolution 2022-10, Patty, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, so the resolution passes unanimously, I guess we'll proceed on that, everyone has to hang around except me, because I already signed them. All right, now we're on to item number 10, this is consideration of Resolution 2022-11, Mr. Moore, would you please read this one?
Happily, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2022-11, resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2022-2023, providing for changes in the stormwater fund appropriations by dedicating funds received through the American Rescue Plan Act, and establishing an effective date, whereas the City Council of the City of Bella Beach adopted Resolution 2022-06 on Monday, September 19, 2022. adopting the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget, and whereas Florida statute one sixty-six dot two-four-one-seven provides the governing body of each municipality at any time, within a fiscal year or within sixty days following the end of the fiscal year, may amend the budget for the, for that year in the same manner as the original budget, unless otherwise specified in the municipality's charter. And whereas, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget must be amended to dedicate the funds received from the coronavirus state global fiscal recovery funds program, a part of the American Rescue Plan Act, to stormwater improvements in the storm fund, now therefore being resolved by the city council of the Bella Beach, Florida. Section one, the city of Bella Beach annual budget for the following funds shall be amended as described in the attached budget adjustment request sent in A to this resolution, and section two, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. As a budget resolution, this has been read in full, uh, on first reading and only reading, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, that was hardly a summary, but hey. We'll accept the entire resolution, uh, let's go to the citizens for comments. As there are no comments from the citizens, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven? So, motion made, uh, motion made by Mike Zabel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. Uh, Mike Zabel, you have the floor.
Yes, as you can see by the city manager report about the additional funds, recommend, uh, approval.
Anyone else?
I have a, I guess a statement, and I was, the accountant didn't, um, give us any backup information as to where are those funds that were, originally the budget fund this, where are they going to be placed, and we're just gonna be in limbo until we decide what to do with them. I know we talked about using them for undergrounding, and it seems like we should have an offsetting entry here reflecting this.
Um, so, the way she had it was she had, um, the ARPA funding was more on a, what she said, the, uh, unearned revenue, and she's moving it, um, she's dedicating it to stormwater, typically with the stormwater fund, in the, uh, whenever we do a project, we move monies from, uh, that are, that are, uh, unassigned into the fund as we pay, pay for things, so we're taking that money that was the unearned, um, we're dedicating it, um, to stormwater and mainly for accounting purposes, because it's a lot easier, um, if we keep it all in one fund, to spend the eight hundred, two thousand. So that, in turn, uh, the money that we had, say, had been budgeted for those stormwater projects, uh, that were gonna pay this, using this money, that money will be available, um, I can, if we want to make a note about how it will, um, is offset, um, because the idea will be that, uh, you know, if you're putting the eight hundred and two thousand in the stormwater to dig that project, then it would be a money for capital projects fund, which would be underground. And then the reasoning, you know, I'm not applying it to undergrounding, the example is because we have a lot of reimbursement through the county involved in that, and it's gonna make the accounting a lot, a lot more complicated.
I understand, and I think that we need to go on record to say that eight hundred and two thousand is there to be used for undergrounding and undergrounding. And that's where I have a problem, with it going in a general fund for, uh, we, this is a project, we agree we would all focus on doing both phases of the project, contingent on some of these funds and some future funds with the four hundred and forty-three thousand that we have additionally received from, we got it, um, to do some, some adjustments that remain, so, I mean, we're pretty close to having that project funded. And I wanna make sure that we have those funds dedicated, whether it's through notation or, um, some other means, or whatever that looks like. But, and I may look to council for, uh, some advice there, but we, I don't know if we, um, if we need to amend this, but I, I, I want something included in the, in the agreement that those funds will be dedicated.
Okay, so maybe turning more of it, you know, a resolution could be. Now, I, I was a little confused about this also, but doesn't, uh, the mention of exhibit A, and what we received as exhibit A, doesn't that lock it in? That we're amending, amending it for the stormwater system?
Yes, you're dedicating the, the ARPA funds to stormwater, um, because it, that is a qualifying expense for those funds.
Hey, I'm, I'm not real sure about the clarification request.
So the, um, we had had eight hundred and two thousand dollars in the budget to pay for stormwater. Now those funds are available for future projects. We talked about those funds being used specifically for the undergrounding along Gulf Boulevard. We had a gap in that budget, and so I wanna make sure that, that's, that we talk about that, and that those funds don't get pushed to another project.
So, uh, should this actually, this, this ARPA funding has to go to the stormwater system, it's the money we've dedicated, so there should actually be another line in this to make this complete, where we're moving money from the stormwater system to the undergrounding project.
My, my advice at this stage, as I understand things, and if I'm mis, mischaracterizing, please let me know. My understanding is, this resolution deals with the dedication of the ARPA funds. And I understand that the point councilmember Vice Mayor Shirley is making, is that, okay, but then what happens to the money that displaces, where does that go? If that needs to be addressed, or if this council would like to see that addressed, that can be done by subsequent budget amendment, um, and we can, and a budget amendment can be done, and then in the January meeting, if we be, given that this one, and all of our team are not present this evening to resolve or address further inquiry as to how they're handling that on the books. Um, we can definitely make sure, you know, following the meeting, that, um, Manager Reifler advises her of that, of that insight that the commission or the council has, that, hey, we've always had the understanding that once this money came through, other money would be dedicated to this other purpose, and we can further amend the budget to address the secondary purpose. The primary purpose here is to make sure that we are signaling to any parties, agencies or otherwise, that, hey, we're complying, we know the way that this money can be used, and we're dedicating it that way. What that does internally for our other monies, we can resolve through additional resolution.
And the way we would address this is, if by some strange chance, uh, City Manager Reifler did not have this as a, as an agenda item for a new resolution for next month's meeting, one of us could certainly do that.
Provided that a resolution is necessary, I'm, I'm sort of assuming that there's, there's abilities to move within funds, so depending on if a resolution is necessary in the first place, then we will have one, if it's simply, yes, we've changed the ledger, because you can move within funds, right? We're not gonna fix the dog park anymore, we're gonna fix the bocce ball park, you can, that's all parks and rent budget, it's just how we're using it. So if those are within the same fund lines, and I just don't have an encyclopedia knowledge of the line items in your budget document to say what funds each thing resides in, but if a budget amendment is necessary, we can provide one, and if one is necessary and that's not done, we work at your pleasure. Other councilmembers?
Yeah, I think, I'm a little confused, because this money is COVID money, where it has to be specifically used for the stormwater. Okay, so if you put it in the way it's written, and we're overfunded, of course you have, through the constitution, you can amend the budget. But if the intention is to move it right now, I think that's fraud.
Uh, I, I think that's, that, that understanding is, is born of a misunderstanding. I, it, it's sort of the idea of, if you have five dollars in your pocket, and you say, hey, when my dad gives me five bucks, then I'm gonna go to the movies.
But that's, but this is a federal allocation of money, right?
And we're allocating.
Which we don't want to, I mean, I think we would, we can, we need fraud, I mean, if our intention right now is to move this money right into, right into undergrounding, which is not.
That's, that's not what this is doing, this is, this is moving it directly into the stormwater fund where.
Right, well, what, what was proposed was, I believe, the idea is, we're gonna take this money and then use it for undergrounding.
No, no, and that's why I said it's a misunderstanding, it's, the, the challenge is you're dealing with fungible goods. Money, it, it's sort of a legal construct of which eight hundred thousand dollars we're talking about. And we're talking about these eight hundred thousand will be used in one way, and by virtue of this influx of eight hundred thousand, we can spend eight hundred thousand another way, is the point that Shirley, Vice Mayor Shirley is making.
Well, that's, that's, that's a topic for another night.
Correct, which is why, which is what the advice idea was.
That's what I'm saying, but we, we.
I think we're in agreement, saying, saying similar things to her.
If I'm putting it on the record now, I don't know where that stands legally.
I'm, and I'm here to advise you that legally it stands that we are okay to adopt this resolution codified.
It's written.
As written, and that's all we're going tonight.
I think I'm in agreement with that.
And then the people, the persons whose job it is to make sure we stay within financial compliance, will analyze and advise appropriately.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Vice Mayor Shirley, are you satisfied with, with this answer?
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's, uh, take this to a vote, and this is to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmembers Abel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. Resolution passes unanimously, and you are clear to move those funds. All right, we are on to item number eleven, this is to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for the replacement of the Seventh Street Park fishing dock. Let's go to comments from the citizens. All right, seeing that there are none, um, any motion?
Motion.
I'm actually being a specific.
Motion to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase of that Seventh Street dock.
Thank you, uh, motion made by Frank Banker, go ahead with a second.
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Probably going to Mr. Banker, we're gonna go to Mr. Reifler, because he added this on to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, for expenditures between ten thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, it is required that we give a, uh, these three written proposals from the service providers, which I've done, uh, provided those for you, uh, they recommended Dex docks in Seawalls of Florida, they have been in business with us before, they've, uh, always offered competitive pricing and quality work. So, uh, moving forward, um, after receiving those proposals, I believe that the, that the Dex docks in Seawalls is, uh, is the way to go, not only for being lower speed, but also for, they will provide good work and a good schedule.
Thank you, um, Mr. Banker, you are up.
That dock's been missing out for about, what, two years, a year and a half?
Yes, yes.
And, um, it was well-served by the people using it on Ninth Street, Eighth Street, Seventh Street, even Fisher. It needs to be replaced, I hope this council puts it back quickly, and, I mean, it's a long time coming, a lot of citizens have missed it.
Thank you, Mr. Banker, other councilmembers?
I'd like to hear with, uh, Councilman Banker.
Thank you. I too agree, and, uh, Mr. Roberts.
Now, Kyle, were all three of the, um, were they like proposals, were they able to give their own proposal, or would we, did we provide a plan to say, here was the cost to do this?
Provided the original design.
Okay, yes. So they're all same type of, some apples to apples to apples?
To apples, um, they were providing the dimensions and what the, uh, you know, the bench, adapt the.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
I was gonna ask about a, uh, about a kayak launch, but I realize it was right next to a ramp, so, uh, sorry, I.
No, actually, we're looking, uh, further down, but this also provides, you can go with the long stuff, yeah.
Good deal, good deal. Any other comments from the council? All right, uh, this is to authorize City Manager Reifler to execute a purchase order for the replacement of the Seventh Street Park fishing dock. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Sable?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, and so that is unanimously, Mr. Reifler, you were authorized to execute with the purchase order.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so now we are on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? All right, well, now we're on to item number thirteen, which is council comments, uh, at the end tonight with our newest council member, Linda Livingstone.
Your comments this evening, thank you.
All right, Mike Zabel?
Just wanna say, uh, happy holidays, again, thank you everybody for the wonderful tree lighting ceremony and the wonderful food, thank you again.
All right, Lloyd Roberts?
I was asking our new council member about her picture missing out there. She said she had that on the schedule, but I told her she could, in an interim basis, put her high school graduation picture up there, it was acceptable, so, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, um, Lesley Notaro?
No comments.
Frank Banker?
I just wanna wish everyone a blessed Christmas, um, I hope we're all thankful for those two storms that bypassed our area with minimal damage. And, uh, hopefully, uh, as we talked about earlier, this year, keep that tree light totally up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Well, I wanna thank the Parks Committee for a nice, um, tree lighting event, that was wonderful, Merry Christmas to everyone. And the, um, Community Foundation, I would, uh, like to challenge three other residents to match a hundred dollars that I'll donate to you all tonight. So, I'll do a three-way match, I won't make it contingent on, on the match, but I would love to make it contingent, so I'm sure there's some residents out there that would donate as well. Um, and then this is just for Kyle, for the city in general, the storm sewer cover on Harrison is crumbling, and if it breaks, it could potentially be hazardous, it's the one, uh, just over the bridge as you go onto Harrison. And I know I've asked in the past if we could look at lighting the bridge on Harrison Avenue, because it's extremely dark, and several times I've had to kind of jump out of the way of powers, because I can't see pedestrians on the bridge, so if we can kind of look at that. I think I actually called them about it, and they never responded, so I got them to do plenty of other things this year, happy end. That's it, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, again, I'd like to thank everyone for, uh, who contributed to the event tonight, Park and Recreation Award, along with city staff. It was a great event, nice to see everyone come out, and, uh, and have some food and drink. Also, this has been an incredible year for our community, we are very much to be thankful for everyone in Bella Beach. Wish you a Merry Christmas, Patty, Hanukkah, a productive new year. Uh, council, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lesley Notaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.